Good evening, and thank you for joining us for this regularly scheduled board meeting of the Ventura Unified School District. No, this is not a throwback meeting. Our board was recently exposed to a possible COVID positive, and so we're all masking as a precaution. And just modeling responsible behavior. So calling this meeting to order. Do I have any need to amend the agenda?
Yes, Madam President. We need to move item 18A, which is a conference item, before items 15D and E. And just have a note that item 15G had an incorrect attachment, so the board and the public now have an updated version to the correct attachment, and the online version of the agenda will be revised as of the end of day tomorrow. So those are my two changes.
Where are we moving now?
Before 15D, but what item was it? 18?
18A.
18A, okay.
And whenever it works for the other presentations in our public hearing, we just want to make sure that 18A occurs before 15D and E.
Okay, perfect. So do I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three zero.
Do I have any public comment? No. Okay, so seeing none, I will entertain a motion to go to closed session where we will discuss pupil matters, an administrative recommendation for student readmission from expulsion or suspended order, and public employee discipline dismissal release.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three zero.
Great. The board is adjourned.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for this regularly scheduled board meeting of the Ventura Unified School District. I'm President Sabrina Rodriguez and the board has just returned from closed session. If you would please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Dom, would you please take a roll?
President Sabrina Rodriguez.
Here.
Vice President Dr. Jerry Danenberg.
Here.
Trustee Ms. Amy Callenhan is absent at this time. Trustee Calvin Peterson is also absent. Trustee James Forsythe.
Here.
And Superintendent Dr. Antonio Castro.
Here.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I did make an announcement at the beginning of our meeting that the board had a close contact exposure to someone who has COVID and so we are, as a, out of an abundance of caution, we are masking and I apologize if that makes it hard for some folks to hear us. A report of action taken in closed session, the board did take action in closed session today. The board took action to approve a settlement agreement with employee reference number 200006. The roll call vote was as followed. The motion was made by Dr. Danenberg and second by Mr. Forsythe and all three members of the board were in unanimous support. That brings us to Superintendent Port.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. We have a special introduction to be making today and so am I turning it over to?
Let me get out my glasses. Okay, so Ms. Sonia Magaña will be joining us today. Would you like to come up? Ms. Magaña was recently appointed as the new Director of Fiscal Services for Ventura Unified. Welcome, it's nice to meet you. I'm going to just read a little bit about you if you don't mind. Back with my glasses. Ms. Sonia Magaña holds a master's degree in management and a bachelor's degree in accounting from Cal Lutheran and brings with her more than 15 years of accounting experience. In addition to her educational degrees, she holds a Chief Business Official certification from the California Association of School Business Officials, CASBO. She has held multiple positions in the accounting field, serving the private sector and public school districts. She currently serves as the Assistant Director of Internal Business Services for the Ventura County Office of Education. Before her start with public schools, she worked as an accounting and tax advisor, an accountant and tax clerk at various certified public accounting firms. Ms. Magaña has built strong connections with various organizations including the Ventura County Office of Education, the California Department of Education, Ventura County Behavioral Health and the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing and other local agencies. She has a deep understanding and knowledge of multi-year grant applications and budget development as well as supporting fiscal oversight of accountability plans for federal programs. She's an expert in providing timely and continuous technical support, including budget creation and management, ensuring compliance with federal fiscal review, and her leadership has proven to be a valuable resource for personnel at all levels. And she has been incredibly effective in delivering personalized training on business, excuse me, on business systems. We're very excited to have you joining our district and we just want to make sure that you feel very welcome here.
Thank you. I am, I am very excited to, to join Ventura Unified and to see what lies ahead, not only for me but as a team as a whole and the organization. I will do the best, 150% of me, like I've always done and I hope everybody is pleased with the work that I will be doing here moving forward. Thank you.
Board members, would you like to say anything?
Just welcome to the team. We're excited to have you and to have your experience here at Ventura. Thank you so much.
Likewise, we're very happy to have you and very pleased with your background that you can be a real asset to the district. So thank you for coming.
And I had a chance to attend the bi-national teacher program out at SOMAS and heard wonderful things about you from superintendents and other service, school leadership that were there. They just had great things to say about you long before I knew you were taking this position. They just were saying what wonderful, what a wonderful person you are and how wonderful you are to work with. So, welcome, we're really excited to have you.
Thank you.
Sonia, welcome again and to share for the benefit of the community, we had a cabinet meeting recently and this was her first one and she just jumped right in, was already a part of the team, was already making contributions to where we're going as a district. So, again, welcome. So happy that you joined us and looking forward to our work ahead.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to good news. We have our gratitude awards for June and July and we have three here that we pick out. So, thank you Marie Anne for going through the rest of the presentation, but there will be lots of names coming on the screen. But as we do, we focus on just a few of these. So, the three that we have today, the first one is Jane Napora, counselor at Foothill Technology High School. The person who made this recommendation said that Ms. Napora is responsive and caring counselor. She's quick to assess the needs and communicate with both students and parents. She never treats the questions as a bother or a burden and she has proven to adeptly resolve concerns and questions. She's made dual enrollment seamless for their eldest daughter and is already starting to support their incoming freshmen. The family is grateful for the care and support that she's provided to the families and more importantly, to all the students of U S D. Thank you Jane Napora, appreciate the work that you're doing on behalf of the district and our families. Next is Ms. Jody Argueta, our risk management. This is a really personal story. This individual said that with their husband retiring after working for 36 years and the role that insurance post-retirement plays, that the, it's going extremely successful and Jody has been an amazing support through that process. She is gracious with her time, her answers and advice and her extensive knowledge. Sometimes quote unquote "doing your job" end quote is more than quote unquote "doing your job" and this family is thankful and appreciative for all of Jody's work on behalf of their family. Thank you, Jody. And last, we And last, we actually have students being recognized and because this is a very positive thing, I'm gonna actually use their first and last name. Nicholas Frat, Michael Harder, and Ryder Kirk are all VUSD students. These students recently joined our ambassador team and volunteered to work at the VUSD booth at the Ventura Fourth of July Fair. They all assisted the team that was there very professionally, provided giveaways and information to the community, they represented the districts with smiles, professionalism, positive attitude, and showed the community firsthand how incredibly amazing all of our students are. We want to thank them not only for taking the time out of their holiday weekends to assist us, but to step up and to be our new student ambassadors, so thank you very much and that concludes my report.
Some really fantastic people on that list, so it's always, it's always nice to see who gets honored. Does anyone have correspondence to share? Okay, thank you. That brings us to public comments and I have three public comment cards here. Ms. Kidos?
Thank you, good evening. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak this evening. I will give you a 30-second warning and the timer will indicate when time is up. The governing board recognizes the impact the civility has in the effective operation of the district, including its role in creating a safe and positive school climate and enabling a focus on student well-being, learning, and achievement. The board believes that each person should be treated with dignity and respect in their interactions within the school community. The board understands that the First Amendment provides strong protection for speech. However, the board expects that all speech, expression, and action will follow the norms of civil behavior on district grounds, in facilities, during district activities, meetings, and events, and in the use of district electronic, digital systems and platforms. Please remember that this meeting is streaming live and we do have students that attend and watch our meetings, so please keep language as respectful as possible. President Rodriguez, please call our first speaker.
Thank you. I have Jonathan Duran followed by Ashley Pope followed by Sarah McLaughlin.
Hello, everyone, board members, staff. Jonathan Duran, representative with the Carpenters Union and I know school's coming pretty quick, my kids are not excited, but hey, it's part of, it's part of what we have to do. But like I said, just again, just showing up, putting, reaching out to you guys again about the upcoming school year, about touring our facility with the students that are coming into the school and have an opportunity for them to be able to come and experience what carpentry is all about. We're also doing with our Women's Auxiliary 101, we're actually doing a back-to-school drive, so for some of the students that cannot afford those items, hey, definitely reach out to us and like I said, we're gonna be collecting those from our membership and be able to get those back to our, to the needy. But again, like I said, for us, it's just say, we're here to, any way we can to help out. If there's anything that you guys need from us, we're only a phone call away or email, so again, it's gonna be a great year and thank you.
Ms. Pope followed by Sarah McLaughlin.
Good afternoon, school board. My name is Ashley Pope and I'm the Board President of Autism Society Ventura County and the Vice President of Autism Society Ventura County's Advocacy Committee. I'm here today to discuss two items with you. The first item is item 16A, the restructuring of the board meetings. Autism Society Ventura County has been attending board meetings for cities and school districts all over the county and it really pains me to say that VUSD has some of the least accessible board meeting rules. I ask that you please consider doing away with the rule that cards need to be in by 7:00 PM with these changes. I also ask that you return to offering public comment virtually and/or, but please and, that you allow written public comment to be received via email. There are parents and students all over Ventura who cannot get here to make public comment. I welcome the idea of having the presentations before the public comment, but accessibility is a high priority for us, as I know it is important to all of you. We learned a lot from COVID and it feels like the structure of our meetings just went right back to the way that they were, pre-COVID, and we didn't learn to continue to make it accessible. I know that in a case where I had the opportunity, I actually had to disclose my disability in order to get an ADA exemption from having to submit written public comment. And then even then, the written public comment didn't go into the minutes as it should have, it just went in as a blurb, not the full letter. That comment was actually also on public comment. So here I am again tonight, asking that as you make these changes, you consider making other important changes. The other comment I want to make on behalf of Autism Society Ventura County is on item 16A, the purchase of the lawn mowers. I don't have, I didn't make a note of how much money we're spending on the lawn mowers, I think it's like $130,000, a lot of money, and I hope that you guys consider something that's maybe a little bit more sensory friendly, if there is an electric option or something that's not so loud. In reviewing the agenda, as I just kind of transported back to being in fourth grade and just distracted by the really loud lawn mowers, so hopefully some of you guys can remember what a distraction that was and maybe we can find something that works better for our students and especially those that sensory difficulties really throw them off altogether. So thank you for your time, thanks for being here, and stay well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Ms. McLaughlin.
I am just here to introduce myself for those of you who don't know me. I am Sarah McLaughlin, I am the new VUA president and I am beyond humbled for this position. I am representing counselors, nurses, speech pathologists, teacher librarians, and classroom teachers. I have been a teacher, part of VUSD for 24 years. I'm a firm believer in our district. My kids went here kindergarten on up, I have two graduate. I have seen the exceptional teaching and other staff members that they have provided for the children. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work collaboratively with Vespa, with our community, with the board, with the district staff, and I'm just really excited for what we can accomplish together and the direction that we're headed, so I just want to say thank you and now you know who I am.
Thank you, appreciate you being here. Okay, since I have no other public comments, that brings us to item 14A, which is a notice, oh, we're gonna skip over because that is, I know that, we can do that now because it's a notice of public hearing, sorry. So notice of public hearing to be held at our next regularly scheduled board meeting on August 29th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Mirza, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just read the notice. Notice is hereby, given that the Board of Education of the Ventura Unified School District at the district's board meeting to be held at 7:30 PM on August 29, 2023, will consider seeking a waiver from the State Board of Education of the competitive bidding procedures set forth in Education Code Section 17466 for the following properties. Real property located at 255 West Stanley Avenue, Suite 100, Ventura, California 93001, known as the Education Services Center. Real property located at 2647 North Ventura Avenue, Ventura, California 93001, known as Avenue Elementary. Real property located at 96 MacMillan Avenue, Ventura, California 93001, known as the Washington School. The real property located south of Telephone Road, north of Bristol Road, east of Tamarind, Ventura, California 93003, known as Jewett Estate. And the real property located between Foothill Road and Telegraph Road, west of Satacoy Avenue, Ventura, California 93004, known as the Sutton Estate. Collectively, the properties. This waiver will give the district the option of using a request for proposal process if the district decides to pursue selling or leasing the properties in the future. This waiver application will not require or commit the district to sell or lease the properties. The RFP process will give the district flexibility when assessing potential sales or leases of the properties if the district decides to pursue sales or leases in the future. Thus, this public hearing only relates to the waiver action because the board will not take any further action with respect to the properties at this time. The board may take future further action in open session if it decides to further pursue selling or leasing any properties in the future. The Board of Education invites public testimony regarding this matter.
Great, thank you. So anyone who has concerns, comments, questions, is welcome to attend that public session at our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mirza. This brings us to item 15A on our action agenda. Administrative recommendation for the expulsion, readmission of student identified as 2205. Board, do I have a motion?
Move, approval. Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0.
Great, thank you. Item 15B is a certification of signatures. We all just recently had an opportunity to meet Ms. Sonia Magaña and we need to certify her signature to sign on behalf of the district. Do I have a motion?
Move, approval. Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. Item 15C, approval of provisional intern permits, known as PIPs, and waivers. Ms. Walnuts.
Hi, yes, we have three candidates that have not yet been able to complete one aspect of their credential and this process allows us to start them to start the school year and us to provide support while they complete that final piece of their credentialing. And these are in hard-to-feel areas such as special education and B-clad certification.
Do we have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Move, approval. Second.
Thank you, but as follows, trustee Forsythe.
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg.
Yes.
And trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 3-0.
Before the start of this meeting, we had an amendment to our agenda, we moved item 18A before item 15D, so that takes us to 18A. Supplemental early retirement presentation, Mr. Mirza.
Yes, good evening, board members. So tonight we have Rachel Sanders from PARZ, which is Public Agency Retirement Services, to present the supplemental early retirement incentive for Ventura Unified School District.
I'm a vice president consulting with PARZ, so this evening I would like to walk you through the PARZ Supplemental Retirement Plan. So the Supplemental Retirement Plan is really designed as a program for districts to offer employees a one-time voluntary incentive for those that are choosing to also retire on top of their STIRS, excuse me, STIRS and PIRS benefit, for those that would simply be looking to resign, really just as an incentive if they do choose to resign at the end of the school year. These programs are really designed to be good for staff to achieve their operational and budgetary goals and also to honor your long-term employees. So hopefully this is something that would be good for everyone at the district. And for those that are unfamiliar with PARZ, PARZ stands for Public Agency Retirement Services. We are the leading provider of Supplemental Retirement Plans, or SERPs, in the state of California. We got started doing these programs back in 1984 and we're actually the third largest retirement system in the state after CALPERS and CALSTIRS. So we have a lot of experience in offering these types of programs and on the next slide you will actually see a sampling of our client list. So we have close to 400 districts that we have worked with in California on offering these early retirement incentive programs. You can see a handful of which are here in Ventura County, some of your neighboring districts, and beyond that, we've worked with districts of all sizes up and down the state of California. I'll also note that we've worked with nine of the 10 largest districts in the state, including LA Unified and San Diego Unified that you'll see on this list, so again, a lot of experience in offering these types of programs to other districts across the state. So in terms of how a program like this would work, ultimately, tonight we would be asking for the board's consideration to open up an enrollment window so that folks could consider whether or not this one-time voluntary incentive would work for them. So with districts, we always suggest a 45 to 60-day enrollment window and during that time, employees would be fully educated by the PARZ team on what this offering is. So our team comes out, we do orientations where we walk all eligible employees through what the offering is, talk about the structure of the program, important dates to keep in mind, and of course, how to complete paperwork. Now during that window, folks that are also considering retirement can certainly also talk to a STIRS or PIRS representative to see if it may make sense for them to consider resignation or retirement at the end of the school year, dependent upon their individual circumstances. Now, once that window has closed, we will set a deadline date for all employees to enroll by and at that point in time, we will do a post-analysis where we will come back to the district and present the updated results so that you have a good sense of what the projected fiscal savings would be and ultimately whether or not this does meet both your fiscal and your operational objectives. So I do want to be clear that this is a contingent plan offering, so we have to make sure that this makes sense for the district in order to move forward. So if you agree to open up the enrollment window tonight, just like we would tell all eligible employees, while we're hopeful that this would move forward, ultimately that post-analysis will dictate whether or not this does make sense and you do have the final say in whether or not to move forward with this plan. If the plan does move forward, everyone who submitted an irrevocable letter of resignation as part of the enrollment process would be locked into participation and would resign from employment at the end of the school year. They could also concurrently retire if they chose to do so, but that would not be mandatory. If for whatever reason the plan was canceled, then employees would have no obligation to resign at the end of the school year and they could continue working unless they otherwise chose to resign from employment. All right, so the next slide goes over the proposed plan eligibility. So in general, this plan would be offered to the district's employees of all groups as represented on this slide, most of whom would be eligible to retire either under CALPERS or CALSTIRS. Now there are a few exceptions to that for certain classified employees that do have at least five years of district service, but we've worked with staff to identify those exceptions, but by and large, it would be for all employee groups, again, looking at retirement eligibility as the baseline parameter for this offer. All right, next slide please, perfect. In terms of the proposed plan design, so we have worked with cabinet behind the scenes to design a plan that we think will be optimal for offering a plan this year and that is going to be equal to 90% of an employee's final pay. So every employee who would be eligible for this plan would get a customized packet sent out by PARZ and that would give them an array of options equal to 90% of whatever their final pay is for this school year. Now the way that this works is that the district would ultimately be providing these benefits through a 403B annuity held at Pacific Life Insurance Company and this would be paid over a five-year period of time through those annuity benefits. Next slide. This slide goes over the various option choices that an employee would have for this plan offering. So every employee has a lot of flexibility when it comes to how they actually take that 90% of final pay benefit. There's 14 option choices in total, there's three variations of lifetime options, some of which folks may be familiar with, that sort of mirror what PIRS and STIRS does for some of their retirement benefits. And then we have options 5 through 15, which are fixed term payment options, and these options pay out over fixed year periods of time, ranging anywhere between five years to 15 years. So the quickest that someone would be able to get this benefit payout would be monthly over five years. And to further illustrate what that looks like, on the next slide, we have an example. This example is based on your average employee for the various groups that are listed here. So for example, for your average certificated non-management employee who would be eligible for this plan, let's say they chose option 5, that would be roughly $1,600 per month over five years, and then again, that would equate to 90% of that employee's final pay if they were to take that. At the end of the day, whether an employee chooses one of the lifetime options or option 5 or option 15, it will cost 90% of their final pay, but it really does give the employees at the district flexibility to choose the option that makes the best sense for their individual circumstances. There's also additional tax advantages. Any retirement benefit paid under nine years, so options 5 through 9, can all be tax-deferred by being rolled over into another qualified account, so your employees will have further choice in that regard as well if they do wish to tax-defer their benefit payments. All right, and then on the next slide, we have some additional examples for your consideration of what those benefit payments look like for some other groups here. And if we move to the next slide, this starts to get into our analysis. So PARZ only recommends that districts consider offering these types of programs if it ultimately is going to help you achieve your objectives, whether that's saving you money, reorganizing, or helping to avoid layoffs. And so ultimately, we want to be incredibly thorough in the analysis that we do before we even suggest offering this. we even suggest offering this program. And so this page gives you sort of a big-picture overview of some of the main components that ultimately drive whether or not a plan like this may make sense or achieve savings in a given year. So in terms of what goes into this, obviously compensation differential between an outgoing employee and someone that might be backfilling their position, that can certainly create a lot of savings. We also want to make sure that we are not taking credit for certain variables in these programs. So we cannot count savings for retirements that you would have in a given year if this were not to be offered. We also discount understanding that you'll see a decline in retirements or natural attrition in subsequent years following this early retirement incentive. And we factor in any retiree healthcare costs, the actual cost to running this early retirement incentive, including the payout to your employees as well as the fees that PARZ charges. And then we also look at potential additional savings due to levels of non-replacement. So all of these variables impact whether or not a district can save money or not. So when we show you on the next, the upcoming slides, what the cost-savings projections are, note that those are net of all of these variables because, again, we don't want to take credit for savings that you would have gotten anyway without offering this plan. We've worked very closely with cabinet members, both on the HR and fiscal side, to really hone in on plan assumptions. We want to make sure that when we are running these analyses, that we are using realistic and conservative numbers so that you feel good about the projections that we are coming up with. And so without going through all of these variables, again, we ran different scenarios with the team, we tweaked some of the replacement salaries based on hiring patterns and what they felt was realistic on a go-forward basis. So again, we want to make sure that we're being conservative and realistic when we are showing you these projections. And on the next slide, you can see what our projections are. So really, the goal of these supplemental retirement plans is to increase your natural attrition in a given year. You know, dependent upon the level of benefit that we see for certain districts, it can be anywhere from two to four times what you might get in a normal year versus your just plain natural attrition. So on slide 12, you can see the number of eligible employees. Again, eligibility baseline is STIRS and PERS retirement eligible with a few exceptions in there. And then in that third column over, you can see what we are projecting in terms of retirement for each employee group. Now, this is based off of looking at the district's demographics, factoring in the age and service of your employees, and also just PARZ's extensive history in doing these types of plans, where we would expect this level of benefit to ultimately land when it comes to participation. So you can see, there would be 607 total eligible employees across all of these groups shown here, and we are projecting that 133 of those employees would ultimately enroll in this plan, which is about 22% of the group. Now, on the next several slides, that's where we get into the projected savings. So let's take slide 13, for example. This is the projected summary of savings for your certificated non-management group. So as you can see in that blue bar there across the top, we are assuming 52 resignations for this particular group. And then you can see what the projected net savings are over the one, three, and five-year periods. Now, a lot of what's going to drive the savings is really going to be dependent upon the levels of replacement that ultimately staff decides is appropriate based on who actually enrolls in the plan. So, you know, we've talked with the team behind the scenes to get some preliminary ideas of what type of savings they may look to achieve, but ultimately, once we have that final enrollment list and the team can go through and identify potentially which positions may not need to be replaced, that's where we can really hone in on those savings and, as I mentioned, bring those back to you at a later board meeting so that you can make a more informed decision on what those projected savings look like. So we've done this exercise for each employee group. Again, all of these are true net savings as explained on that plan assumptions page. We, you know, discounted for all of those variables that are actually costs, so these are true savings. And as we go through the employee groups here, next slide, I think should be the last one, hopefully, maybe one more? Perfect. This is the projected contribution schedule. So as mentioned, Pacific Life Insurance Company is the annuity provider on these benefits. And so ultimately, the district would be making annual payments into Pacific Life Insurance Company over a five-year period. And so if we were to hit those projections for each employee group that we showed you on the assumptions page, this would be roughly the projected contributions that the district would be submitting each year. This is inclusive of not only those 90% of final pay benefits that would be going out to each employee that enrolled, it's also inclusive of the PARZ fees. And again, all of these total contribution figures across the bottom have been netted out of savings. So these are not additional costs, they are built into the analysis that we have shown you. All right. And then finally, to go through a proposed timeline. So ultimately, again, tonight, if the board were to decide to pass the resolution, it would be to open up the contingent plan offering. Again, it would allow folks to start the enrollment process. Again, we could work with the team to get out those customized packets to each of your employees, start the education process, and really walk folks through what this program is. It would also include additional education from STIRS and PERS representatives as well if folks are considering concurrent retirement along with this benefit. And so, you know, we could get that process going as soon as the board gives the green light to move forward with enrollment. As I mentioned early on, typically 45 to 60 days is a window period that most districts are comfortable with, and this certainly gives you that window period. We could hold the orientation meeting, you know, I would say if it was tonight, even earlier than mid-September, but certainly by mid-September, we could come out, do those group meetings to make sure that folks understand the plan, are comfortable, ask any questions they have. Toward the end of that window, we would then come out and do individualized one-on-one meetings with your employees wherein we could answer any personal questions that they may have, help them fill out their paperwork, and again, make sure that everyone is comfortable on a one-on-one basis with this program. This assumes that the enrollment window would be closed by October 30th of 2023, giving the team ample time to be able to reflect upon who actually enrolled in the plan. We would update, as I said, our analysis to reflect those that actually enrolled and provide updated information on where we think those projected savings would come from. And it would also help the team with potential rehiring if you did decide to move forward with the plan. But ultimately, again, it is your decision about whether or not to take action to approve the plan. So we would come back on the November 14th board meeting and provide you with those updated projected savings. And at that point in time, you could take action as to whether or not you would like to proceed with the plan or cancel it if for whatever reason it does not meet your fiscal and operational objectives. Now, again, if the plan does move forward, everyone who submitted their packets with that irrevocable letter of resignation would be locked into participation. They would complete the end of this school year and then resign after the school year was complete. If the board decided not to move forward with the plan for any reason, all of those layers of resignation would be automatically rescinded. But assuming that the plan does move forward, those benefit checks actually commence pretty soon after the school year ends. August 1st is the official start date for folks to start getting those benefit payments, so the employees would see a positive payment soon after leaving district employment. So I know that was a quick overview of the plan, and I would be very happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
So a couple of questions. So you mentioned that this would be a contingent plan. So in other words, we would offer this to employees depending on who signed up and whether or not it met the district's goals. Then in November, the board would either take action to move forward, or if we chose not to move forward, then we would let all those people know that actually now they're going to continue working for us and that offer is off the table. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is correct. Ultimately, we want to allow both the fiscal and HR side of the team look at that list of who actually enrolled to ensure that it does ultimately, again, meet not only your fiscal operation, excuse me, fiscal objectives, meaning you want this to save money, but also operationally, will this work for the district? And 95% of our plans do move forward, but of course, if for whatever reason it doesn't make sense to move forward, the board does have the ability to cancel the plan. And we will be sure to inform all of your eligible employees upfront that that is, you know, part of the contingent plan offering, is that if it doesn't make sense, that you do have that authority to cancel the plan.
And then the other, I guess, question or maybe comment that I have is, so this differs from offering a retirement incentive because people are not retiring. So in other words, someone who's not of retirement age could still take advantage of this and then they could go work somewhere else until they're of retirement age. Is that accurate?
Great, great question. So most of the folks that are going to be eligible for this incentive are going to be of retirement age. Most are eligible to retire under STIRS or PERS. However, the plan does not mandate that they concurrently retire if they are enrolling in this plan. So ultimately, if they resign from district employment but choose to defer retirement until a later date, yes, they could in theory go work for another district and still be eligible to collect this benefit. In the history of doing these plans, I would say it's very typical to just require resignation and not retirement, but what we often see is that oftentimes folks, because they are close to retirement age, may choose to also retire, but again, not mandatory.
Maybe this is a question for our executive team, but the benefit level of 90%, how did you, why did you essentially select that figure?
Hassan, I'm going to pass this on to you in just a moment. I'll just talk about the philosophy of this. There are a few factors why we picked the 90% threshold. I'll just start in kind of order of priority. The first one is that we wanted to make sure that we were casting the widest net for participants. We wanted to make sure that that was inclusive of all of our employees. And then the other piece of that philosophically is that we wanted to make sure that when people make this important decision to finish their career, that there's something that is compelling them to be able to do that. So that's one piece of it. The second part, and that gets to our operational perspective, on the more philosophical perspective, we want to make sure that when people are, if they were, again, if the board were to move forward with this and if the individuals participate, that there are options for that. And so that 90% threshold allows for a lot of options and you saw the ultimate payouts over time, that maximizes those contributions over time. Hassan, what else would you like to add?
Yeah, I think on top of that, we want to cast a wide net, right? And try to increase our participants in order to meet our fiscal goals. From my perspective, why is, you know, the NYPD, as we discussed in previous meetings, 7 million deficit spending unrestricted and about 15 million total for three-year out. So in reality, we wanted, if we were going to propose a plan, present it to the board, we want it to be worthwhile and we want to really cast a wide web that'll maximize our participation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I just want to clarify, item 18A, this presentation is not an action item, it's a consent, or it's a conference item, but the following item is a first-read action item. So in case you were thinking of making a motion, now is not the time. But the next item, 15D, is consideration of the resolution. I think you might want to just stay there because they're related, so there might be questions.
Okay, I'll stay here.
Yeah, so President Rodriguez mentioned, this is the resolution to, for the PARZ supplemental retirement plan to activate and open the enrollment window. That gives the staff the authorization, so we're requesting approval of the attached resolution, knowing that it is a first read.
I would just, so this is a first-read item, and if someone wants to make a motion, you can. I know that trustee Peterson had a lot of questions about this when we were in agenda setting and he's not here. So personally, I would feel more comfortable having a second read on this, but, you know, if you have two people, then you can pass that.
Well, it sounds like the, looking at the timeline, that in order to get this going, the 29th will still be a sufficient time to, or date to start the process.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we bring it back for a second read?
Yeah, correct.
And of course trustee Callahan, who's not here either, sorry. I mentioned Calvin only because he was in agenda setting and asked some questions that I don't think he's had a chance to ask publicly, so I think he would like to have that opportunity. Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And we will anticipate seeing you at our next meeting.
Great, appreciate it, thank you.
And similarly, we have consideration of the agreement for administrative services between PARZ and VUSD, which is also a first read. Do you want to add anything to this?
No, it's just the agreement, but yeah, we can move it to the second read.
Okay, so this will come back to us for our next regularly scheduled board meeting. That brings us to item 15F, request for approval of new mowers. Mr. Merz.
Okay, yes, the facilities ground department currently has three mowers that need to be replaced due to the inability to repair and unavailability of parts, and these are not additional mowers, either replacement of our current mowers that take care of our athletic fields. And we, facilities department has obtained quotes from three different companies and we are requesting approval for the quotes that are follows. So we would be going with Ebbhart equipment, which is the lowest of the three, if the board so approves.
Yeah, I have a question. We heard tonight from a member of the public about possibly looking at electric mowers. Can you tell us the difference of cost between the electric mowers and the gasoline-powered mowers?
Yeah, working with facilities, they don't prefer the electric mowers, just the power is not there, the lifespan, the replacement parts are a lot more expensive, and the cost is significantly more than the gas mowers as well.
I've got a couple of questions. Just a clarifying question, you're asking us to essentially select one of the, okay.
No, these are the three quotes that, and we're wanting to go with the lowest out of the three, which is the Ebbhart.
And I guess this is a question for magnets or the speaker also brought up an issue with sensory issues, you know, being a special teacher, that's all I think about, is how can I minimize the sensory issues in my classroom? And mowers is pretty significant. Maybe you could tell us, if there's someone that could tell us about when mowing typically happens in a school. I know that's kind of a, this is something I didn't think of, and I'm sorry for not bringing it up, but I mean, that was just a question that was brought up. Maybe speak to that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Merz is going to take the lead on this. I'll just say the broadest possible thing. I know our facility staff, they do everything they can to minimize the disruptions on instruction whenever students are there. That said, we have so many people and so many hours to be able to get that work done. So Mr. Merz, if you can just speak to like some of the considerations.
Exactly, we, the grounds department works with the school sites to try to schedule it to minimize disruptions. These are not the smaller mowers that you would see, you know, mowing the lawn, these are big pieces of equipment that you would see normally at the athletic fields, and so we would try to schedule those, you know, while they're operating to be outside of hours, either on the weekends or outside of school activity.
Right, these are for the large fields, like in a high schools, comprehensive high schools.
So they're kind of distant away from...
The classroom?
Yeah.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So I guess, well, two things. I think it would be very helpful to know the differential on the cost of an electric mower versus these, again, just to be able to compare things. But then, secondly, if there's a way for us to adjust the workday for the, like, for grounds folks who are doing this, because I do think very often at our school sites, it is quite noisy during the day when the mowing is happening and we have a lot of turf. So that's, I know that there's only so many hours in the day, but wondering if some of that could be adjusted backwards or if there's a way for us to be more cognizant of the impact it has for students.
I'll just say yes, yeah.
Yes, we can definitely work with facilities to...
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so this is a first read. Did you want to take action or do you want to get the additional information before we take that action? What urgent are these mowers?
They're, they're pretty urgent. They're going to replace the current ones that they have. So they won't have the ability to, they would have to initially, essentially contract down.
So the current mowers are not functioning?
Yeah.
And so these are pretty needed at this time?
Understood. Yes.
So I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve these mowers.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan, do you want to vote on this? Okay, Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three zero.
But I really would like extra information. Certainly before any other mowers come forward, please.
We will provide that in the board memo.
Great, thank you. Because it's a great idea for a lot of reasons, not just for the noise factor, but also as we attempt to be more environmentally responsible. It's a great idea. Okay, so item 15G, request for approval of contracts exceeding $25,000.
And Trustee Callahan, I know you just joined us, but this is one, the 15G is the one that you'll need to read the recusal statement for.
Thank you. I would like to recuse myself from this vote as the agenda item involves a competitor to my current employer, Benessant's Learning. While this is not a conflict of interest as defined by the Fair Political Practice Act or Government Code, Section 1090, and the interest of transparency and to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest, I am recusing myself from this vote.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions regarding this? Okay, then, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan, recusal, sorry, Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
I mixed them up.
I noticed that, and it's okay. Yeah.
Should I, okay.
That's okay. So motion carries with three yes and one recusal.
Okay, and that brings us to item 15H, request for approval of contracts. These are contracts exceeding $25,000 that do not include a conflict.
Okay, so for 24A, I would like to accuse myself from this vote.
Trustee Callahan, we're, I'm sorry, we're not on 24 yet. That's in consent. Right now, we're on 15H.
Thank you.
Yeah, so these you don't have to recuse yourself from. These are all...
First readings. Thank you.
It's a first read, but these are all contracts that do not include any conflict of interest.
Perfect, thank you.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez? Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, item 15I, consideration of textbooks. This is a first read. Dr. Bayless?
Thank you very much. President Rodriguez, trustees, pleased to bring forward these three textbooks. The first of which is for coursework at Solius Ranch, and the second and third for courses that, or the course and pathway that was approved at a recent board meeting that will be at Buena High School, the Public Safety Pathway Course. So this is a first read. These books are available in the lobby ed services upstairs for public viewing, but pleased to bring these before you for a first read.
Great, so these items are a first read, but board does have discretion to take action on these tonight if we are so inclined. And I just want to say, these are super exciting. I love seeing that the, particularly like this, the first responder course is really getting running. And I think it's so exciting to see the materials come in and really be ready for those students. So if no one else wants to do it, I will make the motion that we adopt these.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Great, thank you. This brings us to our conference items. Item 16A, this is the Board of Education Meeting Agenda Structure Conversation. Dr. Castro?
Thank you, President Rodriguez. We, as a board, as a governance team, have been discussing for several months the form and structure that our meetings will take. Staff and the public will have noticed that there are a couple of new agenda item formats. The way that we've gone through action items is one example of that. But the board has been deliberating some of the other things that we need, not need, but that we should consider in terms of how our meetings will be structured to maximize our time that we spend together. One of the things that was brought forward for consideration was an earlier start time, given that we are by and large consolidating to one meeting a month. And so that would allow us to be much more fresh for longer periods of the day and then potentially to not go as late as we have been on occasion. So consequently, oh, great, that part of the PowerPoint's up. What we would discuss, and we've run this through legal counsel, it just requires, actually, it doesn't require anything, but we want to make sure that should the board, there be consensus for these changes. We wanted to make sure it was done in a public manner. Marie Anne Kieros would convey this publicly, communicate this to make sure that everyone was aware. But we don't have any requirements legally to do anything other than that, to make sure our community is informed. So what our proposal would be, that we would beginning, starting our next meeting in August, move that meeting start time to six o'clock, which means that our closed session time, which currently starts at 5:30, would just start an hour early as well, 4:30. So as again, we don't need action taken looking for consensus. So before we go through each successive one, because there will be some lengthy discussion on some of these other items, I just want to take the opportunity to see if there are any questions that you might have or statements that you would want to make. And if not, then I just need to see consensus on that. Okay, lots of head nods. All right, fantastic. Moving right along. Similarly, given that we are moving to a once-a-month meeting format, the practice in the district had been to provide notice of public hearings in the meeting prior to that public hearing taking place. We've reached out to legal counsel to just discuss, we want to, of course, we have to meet our legal requirements and statutory requirements related to public hearings as a public agency and public entity. We're all bound by the same rules and regulations. However, the public notification is not required to take place in the format of the board meeting itself. So we would, we would, we would request the board's, I would say, consensus around just removing that one portion of the agenda, the notice of public hearing, with a couple of exceptions, not because it's required, but because we feel that it still meets with our internal needs, with the exception of our LCAP and budget adoption processes, which take place formally in June. Given that we know we will have two, no less than two meetings in June, there would be no harm in using those opportunities for the notice of public hearing. Also to encourage public comments on those items because they are substantial as it relates to the operation of the district. So does anyone have any questions on this issue? Okay, it looks like we have consensus. Yes? Okay, all right, moving right along. In previous meetings, the board had also discussed an idea, an aspiration to structure public comments so that way it's more bound to the item at hand. Currently, like a lot of districts, we have public comment that takes, it takes place at the beginning of the meeting. Individuals have the opportunity to provide public comments on things not on the agenda and things on the agenda. The focus of this piece of the public comments would be for those portions of the public comments that are specific to an action or a conference item. Okay, so I want to be really clear on that. We would not be changing any other protocols for any other kind of public comments. This, and it would hold the same for, or for closed session, for example. So those things would not change. This potential structure change is focused on those items that come before the board for action or as a conference item as we had this evening. So I want to thank Amy Dom for doing a really comprehensive search of how several districts have run different public comments. There were an array of options, and we reviewed these and just, we're providing one example because it seemed best suited to the feedback that you had provided us in previous meetings. So you can see it here. The structure would be that if individuals were going to comment on, let's just make up a number, item, it's 18A, and 18A, we, staff would present our, any information on that item. The board would have the opportunity to ask questions of staff on that option. And then public comment comes after that for a couple of reasons, but the most important being then the public has the opportunity to have heard the, the action or conference item from the staff. They have that information, not just posted, but the interpretation and implications of that information, and have then, would then have heard the, had the benefit of hearing the board's questions and concerns on that issue that may mirror the public's. Then, although many people come prepared with written comments, that's not always the case. And so by the time, there could be individuals that would have had a concern, and they may feel like the board has addressed those concerns with the questions that were previously asked. This would have several ancillary benefits, one of which would, the public has the opportunity to hear that debate prior to making comment. It could, but not always. It could reduce the amount of time that we spend on public comment, even if the individuals gave public comments. That may be reduced from three minutes to one minute on occasion. And then the other piece of that too is if we look on to number four, after we receive public comment on those items, the board still has the opportunity to reflect on the public comment that was provided. Again, deliberate is a group. You could still, although it's not there in terms of asking staff, obviously that, that format still changed, that doesn't change. And then the board would, on action items, the board then takes action, assuming, you know, whether it's a first or second read. If it were a conference item, there's no action required, so there would be no action taken. So this, again, we can, because this doesn't require any legal notification, this is a format that we could share with the public. If the board were to have consensus on it or have any additional feedback, we could bring it back at a subsequent meeting. But if we wanted to, there would be nothing to stop us other than notifying the public that this is the new format. We could implement it as of August 29th or a subsequent meeting. And then if, for whatever reason, we're receiving feedback from the public that that doesn't work for them or creates other hurdles for them, then the board can always go back to what we have traditionally done. So that concludes my statements. Any questions?
I have a question about public comment. They, for instance, if this new format was, or structure was applied to 15G, public comment could be, someone that wants to speak to that can wait all the way till 15G, or they have to submit the speaker card by six.
Okay, phenomenal question. That, whatever practice we implement, we just need to be consistent. So for example, if we were to say that if you wanted to comment on 15G, that you would need to, you need to submit your request to provide public comment by a given time. There are pros and cons for allowing them to not setting a timeline for that. And one of the biggest reasons is the board, then, the board president, would not have the ability to get a sense of how many public comments there are on a given item. If we don't get a sense before the meeting starts to know how long that, that particular item for public comment would be. But that's just, that's a consideration. It's not a mandate. And that, that same consideration plays out in the current structure of our board meetings anyway. Even when we know how many items there are ahead of time, we're under no obligation to reduce the amount, or excuse me, the length of public comment. So it plays out the same whether it happens at the beginning of the meeting or subsequently in the rest of the meeting. It's a judgment call.
I guess when staff presents, you know, as someone just in the public, especially during like the Ventura City Council meetings, you know, there, there might be a question that pops up that the board or staff hasn't asked. So as a member of the public, that's something I would like to do, submit that question right before, just because it came up at that moment. But like you said, it could increase the amount of time or the amount of public comments. So that's my concern. I think, you know, since we're a public organization, allowing the public to give as much feedback as possible during these board meetings is important to me. But of course, I'd like to hear all your opinions.
Yeah, so I agree, and Dr. Castro knows, I mentioned this during agenda setting, often when it comes to like city council meetings, which have a very similar format to this, I'll be watching the meeting at home, and then when it gets, you know, three items to the item I want to comment on, then I drive down to City Hall, submit my public comment. And so I do think it's important to allow people that time, that grace, to be able to say, like, I don't have, you don't have to submit it at six o'clock when the meeting starts, but you could submit it. I think it would be, maybe there's a compromise because I think allowing people to get all the way through the presentation and the board deliberations before they submit a public comment makes it hard for the board president, which I won't be, right, but like, makes it hard for the board president to manage the flow of public comment and still be respectful of people's time. So I think maybe a compromise would be by the start of that item, right, before the staff presentation starts. You have to have submitted your card, right? And then you could always, if your question didn't come up or your question was answered, you could always say, never mind, my question was answered, I don't need to speak, right? So, but it just, it kind of requires people to actually see the staff presentation and hear the board questions before they give a public comment, which I think is helpful. But I totally agree with you, we want to make sure that people have ample opportunity to provide comment. It's really important to me.
Along that lines, is there any reason why we can't accept written public comment to have it added to the record?
There's no reason that we can't accept written comments. Different agencies go through that differently. So our public speaker or commenter tonight had a question about what is reported and how it's reported. It looks differently. And we could, we could develop some, we would have to, one thing that we would need to do though, is we would need to potentially update our policies to reflect that. So that's something that we're not prepared to get into tonight about what, based on the feedback that we received, what that would look like. So we would need to have a conversation about that with our policy. But coming back to the question about the, accepting the when we accept it, there are other considerations. Even if we, coming back to the compromise, even if we want to maximize public participation in the meeting by delaying the timeline, one, I'll just say, we just need to be consistent. So that's the most important thing. But the other part, and we saw this play out tonight, the public may not necessarily know if they weren't paying attention to earlier in the agenda when we reordered items. And that, that could create a delay, right? So one of the things that we're trying to do is make our, our meetings more efficient and effective. One thing that would effectively happen is if they weren't aware that we've changed the order, then we'd have to pause the proceedings, collect that information, bring that up. And then again, the board president has to make meaning of that very quickly. So it doesn't really lend itself to the kinds of meetings having orderly and a more orderly process that we and the public can anticipate. So again, it's not, there are pros and cons, and maybe there's a compromise in the middle. So that way, we're less likely to put ourselves and the public in that position. We want to maximize the feedback from the community, and we also want to make sure that we have predictable and orderly meetings. So those are both things that everybody wants.
Just to make sure that I'm understanding. So if someone wanted to provide a general public comment around something, let's say, the swimming pool, right, like, and it's not something that's on the agenda, but they, they want to come and speak to the board about it, that would still happen at the beginning of the meeting, would still have the same essential rules that we have now. But if they were wanting to make a public comment on an item that was going to be heard later, they would not be able to make their public comment at the beginning of the meeting. They would have to wait until that item is read.
That's correct.
So the other, I think, potential impact of this, right, is that we do often have staff members who come to provide public comment. And so it does mean staff members are staying later to provide public comment on an item that might be later in the agenda. But it provides the, I think, the counterbalance to that is that it does provide them an opportunity to hear our questions and comments as part of that process.
Are you saying we wouldn't give them the opportunity to speak ahead of time if they wanted to come and have their say?
If we adopt this new, what's being proposed, if they were addressing an item that is on our agenda, they would have to wait till that item is being read.
And I'll just provide... And I'll just provide a little bit of color here, in that when we say the term staff, we're using that really generically. I want to be really clear that the, the staff that is being asked to be present, to present on that item, they're here, and they're expected to be here. I think for the community's benefit, when, I think the conversation we're saying is when staff members who are speaking as a, as a public, you know, just providing public comments, I think that's what you're talking about. So like, if we had teachers who were trying to lesson plan for the next day, par professionals who were coming to give comment, and it was on that action item, you're right, it would invariably extend the amount of time that they're spending in a board meeting. That's, that's absolutely true.
I'm all for accepting this new structure, and I understand some of the limitations with it, but, I mean, we could always come back, six months, 12 months, and revisit this. Right? Yeah.
I agree. And I think this, one of the nicest things about this is that it does more closely mirror what our city council does, which allows the public to kind of know one system, right? Like, so that we're doing things that are more similar to one another because our system had been very, very different from what council was doing. So this kind of brings us all into more of an alignment. So I think it's good.
For consensus, I just need two others that think it's a good idea.
No, I, I think it's fantastic, and I appreciate you taking the input and orchestrating a structure that not only shows parity with our other local governance body here, but also helps with clarity, as this is our meeting, but we're looking for community input to be able to have concise and orderly components to the flow of our meeting. So I appreciate that. So I think it's fantastic. So I, I agree in that implementation by next meeting, and then being able to see how it goes and evaluate, just like we do with really everything.
And just to, and the public comment issue, a question, are we going to go with the compromise, are we going to go with public comment six?
I can work that out with President Rodriguez, to get a sense of where, like, how this would change us operationally, and to the board president. And that's in the purview of the board president anyway, for, for our board policy, so we can work that out. Okay, I thank you for, for your consensus. And as I shared before, I want to again thank publicly Amy Dom for the work that went into this. This was, this is very thoughtful. And then proactively, I'm going to thank Maria N. Quiros for the extra communication that's going to take place to communicate this to our community. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, item 16B, renaming of board-appointed committees.
Okay, so let me spend a moment sharing what this is not. We are not, we are not reviewing our list of committees tonight. We are, we are not changing committee representation. In fact, we're not even talking about most of our committees. In reviewing this item, and, I have a visitor, there, we, we have a substantive conversation that needs to take place during our December meeting. So I want to make sure that we say that. But right now, what I would like to do is to implement a best practice, we could continue doing things the way that we have. But what I would like to do is to implement a best practice as it relates to designating board committees that are ad hoc committees. And ad hoc committees by their definition are usually more time-bound committees. And so by going through, and we will, we will do this comprehensively in December, but currently, we've curated a new committee, a new committee to the district that hadn't been around before, and that was our Educator-Workforce-Property Committee. We've been referring to that as the Property Committee in general. That, what I would like to do is to start implementing a best practice of designating those types of committees as ad hoc committees, because they are by definition time-bound. And that communicates to us and to staff and to the community, those committees that are standing committees and those committees that are ad hoc committees. There's more work to be done in going through our current structures, our current committees, which of them even exist anymore. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and that work will be done later in December. But what I wanted to do, again, we don't need approval on this, but just wanted to take this opportunity to convey to the public the reasoning and rationale for this. Again, is it a best practice? I would like us to start with our newest committee, the Education-Workforce-Housing/Property Committee, just that we would start referring to that and seeing that publicly as an ad hoc committee. And that is because it is time-bound in nature, and that just again, designates that, that at some point, that may go away, unlike other committees, many of which are standing committees. And they are, will in perpetuity, and generally, be a part of the way that we gather people, and the formats that they take are generally very concise and very constricted, and they serve an ongoing purpose. So is that, do I have just consensus that that's, any questions on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
So this is not your time to ask to get off committees?
No, that is not the time.
Okay, this brings us to our Conference Ed Services Agenda Items. Update on the Secondary Study Plan, ECHS, I can't, like, I always just want to say El Camino and Flex. Dr. Bayless.
Thank you very much, President Rodriguez. Before I dive in, I just want to recognize those folks in the audience who contributed to this. Thank you to Director of Secondary, Bobby Powers, and also Expanded Learning Director, Laurel, who, they both play a significant role in this. Let's go to this first slide here. This, this is an opportunity to provide you with a board policy required update. This board policy was updated as a result of some of the legislative changes and that occurred during COVID. So we're, we're doing that now, and this should be a yearly occurrence. And you can see here some of the things that our board policy states that we need to update you on. That's not just what this presentation's about, it's going to serve that purpose, but the second purpose is to outline and a proposed process for adjusting the way we've sort of been offering independent study over the last several years as a result of COVID, and a chance for a board to provide input on that and ask questions. So let's start with the sort of required portion per your board policy, where we give you an update on independent study, district-wide. So overall, our enrollment, and this is from, it projected into this coming year, is approximately 492, but that does not take into account home hospital, which I think we would describe as a kind of independent study. And it doesn't, we don't know specifically how many Pacific High School students will be on independent study, but we know that it'll be at maximum 10% of their enrollment, so roughly 23 at any given time. So we're, we're just over about 500 students projected for independent study for next year. And there's a portion of the board policy that requires me to update you on academic performance for all students in independent study, and that'll be coming in October. Now, specifically in, in our specific independent study programs, last year, Pacific High School had a total of 37 enrollees, but again, not all at once, because at any given time, you can only have 10% per the rule. And we had a total enrollment, again, not all at once, because home hospital is designed to be primarily temporary in nature, so a total of 49 home hospital enrollments last year. Graduation rates for El Camino were 90%, although much like that statistic lower down in the slide there, for Pacific High School, it doesn't tell the whole picture because we have so many students that ultimately graduate as a result of summer school, credits earned in the summer, right after their senior year, so that's not captured in these statistics. But nonetheless, El Camino has traditionally had a very high attendant graduation rate. And you can see the attendance rates there for Homestead, 94%, El Camino, 96%, which are above our, our averages for the district from last year, and Flex at 83%, which is slightly below. And I, and I, just to touch on a previous presentation about our audit, that was one of the findings that we, we just need to be very systematic in making sure our master agreements, our learning agreements as they're called, are all completed so that we can capture attendance properly in, in those settings. So this is the one update slide, and you'll get some more when we start doing October, in, in October, when we have Dashboard and CASP data to present. But I'm happy to answer any questions about this before I move on. All right. Okay, the, the overview of the next three slides is that we have two independent study programs at the, in our comprehensive settings, independent of Pacific High School and independent of Home Hospital, that have sort of become more similar, even though they started out as very different, and that's really a result of COVID. And so where I'm going to take you is hopefully a, a description of why we're going to sort of revert a little bit back to what we had pre-COVID with independent study while preserving some of the, the options and growth that has occurred for independent study in Ventura Unified. So let's start with Flex. Flex was designed literally months before COVID struck, and it was designed primarily to be an option for students who were leaving our district for independent, largely charter independent study programs. We just didn't have, again, outside of El Camino, we didn't have sort of an analogous, competitive program for those students. And so right before COVID, we had approximately 80 students enrolled. And I think that Ventura Unified did an excellent job of retaining students during that time. It was designed to keep students in the district. And I can't tell you with certainty was where every one of those 80 students headed out the door, but that was really the philosophy that was talked about with our counseling departments and our administrative teams. That's really what we want to offer those students who are headed out the door to a competing independent study program. Not only just to be, to keep them in the district, but we really felt strongly that it was a, a much better educational option, because we would often receive those students back from other programs who were even now more credit deficient. And so we felt like it was, it was the instructionally appropriate thing to offer. In addition, we added the option that students who went on independent study could stay with us for one or two classes in person. So it gave students the fantastic option to stay connected to us, and it increased the likelihood of their success in the program, but also potentially their return to in-person learning, should they choose it later on. So again, I think it was a very successful program. COVID, and the legislation that followed turned it into our COVID online program for secondary. And I feel very fortunate that we had it when we had it, because our agility was greatly enhanced, because we had so many structures in place already. So during those COVID years, we approximately had 200, 250 students enrolled, and that's, that's true now, not now, but at the end of last year, that's about what we had. We had just over 200 students enrolled in Flex. And again, last year, Flex was returned to grades nine through 12. If you recall, we did offer sort of a, a middle school Flex option per the, per the law, before we had fully returned it to Homestead K8, which is what we have now. So let's, let's take a look at the next slide. Before I talk a little bit about El Camino, and I, I didn't have a slide on El Camino, because I think you're all fairly aware of that program, but I think maybe this will, will get us there. The difference between El Camino and Flex is, is, is kind of minimized over the years. And that's because we've greatly enhanced the, we've, we've obviously offered the multi-site enrollment option for Flex students to stay at their site. And we've really streamlined our processes for offering multi-site enrollment district-wide, but also at, at El Camino. So we have more multi-site enrollment, and now both programs offer it. Let me be a little more systematic here. Master agreements, yes, we have, that's required for both. All of these are the same, even let's take a look at that third row, one teacher for all courses. That's an attractive option for students to sort of increase their focus and have one point of contact. And this is something that El Camino's been doing for a long time, and it is annually, every time, whether it's at the graduation and talking to parents, or at open house, that's, that's one of the top three features that parents and students really appreciate. It's one point of contact, and there's that, sort of that shepherd mentor that guides them through. And that's really what Flex is as well. Those teachers are also teaching full-time during the day in a regular, comprehensive setting, those Flex teachers, and then they are doing Flex work on the side. El Camino teachers are completely wholly assigned to that kind of independent study work, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Credit recovery options are, occur in both, although it's a little less common in, at El Camino, because students are already on a sort of self-paced program, and there's just less of a need to hit certain timelines, and therefore maybe fall shy of those, and then go back for credit recovery. So I think what I'll do is just I'll, I'll highlight the differences here. So historically, El Camino, as a middle college, has a required dual enrollment course. And that's not, of course, the case for El Camino, excuse me, not of course the case for Flex. However, I, what I'll be pointing out in October, the good news here, and I think the compelling point that I'd like to highlight on the dual enrollment side, is that we've had now, again, looking at the data for last year, a significant increase in the number of students district-wide taking dual enrollment. So I think the barriers to dual enrollment are falling, I'm extremely pleased about it. And even we have some student group differences that are decreasing in the kinds of students that are accessing dual enrollment. You know that we have, during the school day, CCAP dual enrollment course at Pacific High School. So all that to say, whereas in the past, do, a, a required dual enrollment course was maybe prohibitive conceptually for some students when they were thinking about our, in our primary independent study school of El Camino, I, I think that's significantly decreased and will continue to decrease. And as I'm, as we're proposing here to transition a little bit away from Flex and emphasize El Camino more, in working with Principal Hector Guerrero, we can, as that note down at the bottom says, we can be flexible with that requirement as we transition Flex students to El Camino. There's no statutory or requirement that students have to take dual enrollment, it's a programmatic feature of El Camino that is really important and good, but we hold it as important and good for all of our students in secondary, not just our El Camino students. What, and, and finally, not finally, but the third from the bottom row, the curricular options. El Camino is exceptional at offering a variety of curricular options, online, hybrid, text-based, book-based, edgenuity, Apex, Alex, the list goes on, based on whatever the student needs. And so in many ways, it's more flexy than Flex. So we find that to be a little ironic, and again, something that is just leading us to our, our conclusion of wanting to increasingly emphasize El Camino as our primary independent study option. So maybe I'll, I'll, I'll stop there, we're just, we're on our last slide here, and then I'm looking forward to any feedback and input and, and questions that you might have. So again, our proposal and our plan as of right now is to return to El Camino being the primary independent study option for our students. And again, these are sort of my, my four, and I've already touched on many of them, but I'll do that. Again, just in summary here, it's, it's already a better Flex for many Flex students because of how flexible El Camino is and how somewhat inflexible Flex is, given that it only has edgenuity coursework. And we're increasingly getting more and more students with diverse courses of study in Flex, AP, honors, and they're taking dual enrollment. I mean, they're, they're looking more and more like El Camino students. So, and that's just the conclusion that we've come to. Our, our El Camino teachers and admin and counselors and staff, this is their center lane. And we're constantly having to work with administrators who are working in good faith, trying to keep Flex going, and they're, you know, coercing and roping in teachers who are doing this on the side. We, we have an incredibly skilled staff who are exceptionally well-trained and experienced in this, and I just think we, we need to return to that. And again, the last thing I mentioned is this dual enrollment, we're just in a very different place dual enrollment-wise, much better place now than different place dual enrollment-wise, much better place now than we were five years ago, and I, and I don't think it's as prohibitive, and we can be flexible in the transition. Our plan is to continue to offer FLEX. We, we still want to retain students, but we want to be a little bit more reserved with how they're being placed. I referenced Home Hospital earlier, and I'll end with this and invite your question and comments, but we struggled with Home, we struggle with Home Hospital curriculum and placements because the best option for those students happens to be FLEX, but we often didn't have room because we had 250 students and we didn't have any staff. And so we were always trying to cobble together something that I think that was serviceable, but not optimal for students in Home Hospital. So we want to reserve it for more specialty cases. So that's where we're headed. Happy to answer any questions, and again, thank you to Laurel and Bobby for this, and if there's something I can't answer, I may have to call you up to the microphone.
I do have a question. Do you, do, thank you so much for your presentation, and I'm curious, will we have, is there any predictions about losing enrollment?
With?
In general, like, let's say if folks do not want to be acquired essentially into the El Camino program, and I'm hearing that there's, you guys are kind of patching together essentially a very customized program that is not necessarily scalable and also not the intent around independent study, is what I'm hearing. But is, is there some thoughts about, will we lose some enrollment in this transition?
You know, it's, it's a great question. It's something that we have talked about because we, we don't want to offer something programmatically that might be good for a dramatically decreased number of students as the rest of the students flee to other programs outside of the district. That's not the intent. We're not going to compel, excuse me, we're not going to coerce or require mandate any current student that's kind of a legacy FLEX student that we promised that program to from last year to continue, but we are going to offer it. Hector and his team are prepared to meet with those students and again, offer them all of the additional options that El Camino offers, but we won't mandate anyone. So I don't think so, but I, I obviously can't guarantee that, but we're not going to lose anyone as a result of a mandate because that's not what this is.
Thank you. And so, and I'm, I'm curious, because FLEX, I know, well, let me just put this, so for summer school, we use Learn for Life, is my understanding. So is, is that similar? Like, I'm just saying, let's say some folks of the 250 are sharing, you know, El Camino, as compelling as this may look, it's, it's just not for our family. Is there kind of a Plan B outside of the legacy for 23, 24 folks to possibly even look at something like Learn for Life or some other education options?
Our, our Learn for Life partnership is for summers only, and that's, and that's primarily so that we can offer more than what we used to be able to do on our own as they're on a year-round schedule and we're not, and so they, that's the arrangement that we, we partner with them to offer more because of their year-round schedule. We, we don't have any kind of existing partnership during the year because we're on schedule, we're collecting ADA for those students, and no two entities can collect ADA for a single student at the same time. So I, I think our plan right now is, again, to continue with FLEX, but to slowly wean ourselves off of it as we increasingly emphasize El Camino for those legacy students that absolutely want to stay, they can, and it is a better option for them. It's still a better option for them, I believe, than going to some of those other programs where they can stay and play sports for us, they can stay and be involved in arts and band, and they can sit in one or two live classes. So I still think we have a competitive advantage. So to answer both questions at once, I don't think we're going to lose students, and I don't think that there's a need to offer another program.
But there may be an evaluation, because I'm assuming we're looking at ongoing decline in enrollment and our education options. And I'm just, I just know two different students within the last couple of years that, that did just that. It also could have many of the implementations of COVID, right? And so I'm just, I'm curious about as we look at decline enrollment, again, this is 250 students, but it would be interesting to survey and kind of look at in general exit surveys and/or folks that are transitioning to different places and what their feedback is from our community.
Trusty Callen, I think the point's well taken, right? We need to evaluate what this implementation does and doesn't. I, I, I don't necessarily want, I can't, just in the same way that Dr. Bayless couldn't address, like, what are the ramifications? But I do, there's the opposite side of that, which is, we also can't, we can't necessarily determine the, the FLEX experience now because the El Camino experience for those FLEX students will be a very different experience and in many ways, a much more coherent process because we will, we know and we do it well. So we'll be able to describe that to these FLEX students as we make this transition, and then we'll know, like, we'll start to be able to catalog some, some qualitative responses from that, like, okay, how is that going? How are the students and families responding? Are they indeed, you know, being served then in El Camino? Like, we'll be able to start getting those qualitative pieces a lot faster than, you know, that, that, that aggregate end-of-year data. And then, you know, Dr. Bayless, if you want to speak to that, like, about how we'll just, you know, be nimble in terms of our, our addressing those concerns as they arise for each family.
Yeah, agreed.
Because I think El Camino does that now.
Yeah, if, if I'm understanding correctly, we will absolutely continue to monitor and evaluate the program and see if, if it turns out that this switch is somehow causing some kind of loss of enrollment, if it's, if it's not communicating the, the kind of flexibility and educational options that we know is a board goal and a value that we'll absolutely be back to talk about a Plan B, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Dr. Castro, I apologize.
I, I, there's no real response. You, you addressed it. It really is just about how we don't need to wait until the aggregate end-of-year results to know whether we're losing students as a result of this practice, this change in practice. We'll be able to get that real-time qualitative data, and then we can respond accordingly.
Yes.
I was curious, what's, what is the staffing ratio for El Camino versus, like, the per student to teacher ratio? Is it the same as our other sites?
No, it's, it's actually different. So it's, it's a 20, I'm buying Gina some time here, I believe it's 20, I think we staff at 25 to one.
So, and, yes, I think it's 20, 24.
Okay, 24 to one, yeah.
Because I guess one of the questions, I, I think El Camino's model is fantastic, and I've always been impressed by their outcomes, but I know from having visited the site, you know, fairly regularly, that one of the challenges is that it's really designed for a college prep student, right? Like, it is, it is a middle college program, which is designed for students who see themselves as going on to the community college or a four-year college. And so are we going to need to, to support the staff there if we're sending now a more traditional FLEX student, which is kind of, I mean, at least in my sense, is, is not often someone who views themselves as a college-bound student, not, they couldn't go that route, but that's not how they maybe view themselves or are not taking college prep classes currently. So we're asking the staff at El Camino to really kind of tweak their model to serve a different segment of our population, and so are we providing some supports during that transition?
Yeah, that's, that's an outstanding observation. I, I want to say that, remember, if we're looking at the difference between 80 pre-COVID and 250 post-COVID, there's many students, I mean, more than 100 students that I think are now in FLEX, and by their course of study, they're A to G, they're college-bound. So it has started to capture those students that normally would have been at El Camino. So I don't think it's in, while it is true that there's going to need to be some kind of adjustment for some FLEX, some FLEX students that are living in that margin between what we might say a traditional FLEX student was and what an El Camino student is, we can absolutely do that, but I do think what we're talking about is recapturing a lot of those traditional El Camino students from FLEX.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I, and this is a huge generalization, right? But many of the students that we initially crafted the FLEX program for, who were leaving us for alternative charter school program, were students who were struggling significantly academically, and it was part of the motivation for them to leave our system. So I guess my, my concern is, in order to be, for those students to be successful, they actually need a lot of resources, which is, you know, what we see, like, at a Pacific, where we, where we see those students really be successful because of the resources and the talented staff that push in on that. So I'm just curious, like, are, you know, how are we designing a program at El Camino where those students will be successful? Because if you take a student who is struggling academically and then put them in a, in a college class at VC, they're going to need a lot more scaffolding to be support, to be successful, right? And ultimately, if we want them to view themselves as college material, they have to be successful to see themselves going further down that road.
That's right. And actually, as I referenced earlier, with the, the significant increases in dual enrollment that we're extremely pleased with, we do believe that the target audience, and this is per the state, this is per state legislation, it's per state mission, that it's really that marginal group of students that might not consider themselves college-bound, that that's what dual enrollment is for. And so even more so, the impetus to try to get them to a place where dual enrollment is, is a part of the culture, that we have teachers and counselors that are, that are really skilled in supporting them. So I understand your point, but I would also say that in order to serve those students, that our dual enrollment initiative is really designed to support, El Camino is the perfect place. I mean, again, remember, the only place outside of El Camino that we have a C cap dual enrollment course during the school day is at Pacific High School, and we had, I, I might be a little off here, but about 23 of 25 students in that English course pass their in English class, a college English class. So yes, outstanding teacher, great support, those are all things to me that describe the El Camino program as well. Those students can absolutely be successful in that environment. But to your point about helping the staff adjust their mindset, and that's already the case with Hector, again, if, if we looked at El Camino five years ago, I think it would, it, El Camino has changed as well. It is more flexible of a place, and we, we, you have leadership there that is, is willing to help those students get there to El Camino, and then maybe slowly over time, not immediately, complete a dual enrollment course. So I, I think we're going to try to make the transition as positive as possible for those students that we can inspire to do it, and we absolutely will work with the staff.
Yeah, and please don't have, don't hear my comment as saying that, like, I don't think the El Camino staff can do that, but I, I just think we are asking them to tap into a, a whole new category of student. So I think it's important to make sure that we're supporting them through that process, right? And not only our teaching staff, but also their support staff, because this, the El Camino support staff deal a lot more with families just by nature of the independent study, right? They get a lot of parents who are coming in trying to figure out how to navigate a pretty hard system. It's not a drop your kid off and
No.
Come back, you know, later kind of day. So I just want to make sure that we're providing this support for the, for the program transition to be successful.
Yeah, thank you for those reminders, all good points.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Bayless. And 17B, update on our ethnic studies graduation requirement.
All right, I would like to invite Sarah Gluck Perez to the front here, where we're going to share this presentation. And this is similar in that we are just updating you on a process that is underway, but early so that we get your input and feedback to help guide that process. So Sarah's here because she is the lead professional developer, developer as the secondary humanities TOSA, and she has a lot of expertise in this area, and most importantly, she has a lot of respect and admiration of the secondary teachers who know her work well, and so it's, it's really wonderful to see her in a room with secondary teachers guiding them on a new process. So Sarah, why don't you take it away on this first slide?
Thank you. If we could, yeah. So thank you, I'm, I'm happy to be here. Usually you see me with novel adoptions, so this is a new, a new route for me, and I appreciate Dr. Bayless giving me the opportunity to work on this, and it's something that's really close to my heart as well. So Dr. Bayless and I have learned so much, and we'd love to just share a little bit with you. I wanted to start with just a really general timeline for you of how we got to where we are, which is, we are about to begin implementing an integration of ethnic studies into U.S. history district-wide, that's 11th grade history. So if you look at winter 2018, that's when the USD Board passed a resolution for a graduation requirement. There were some, some incidences on sites in the community, feedback from the community to go this direction, which was progressive for this, for this board at that time. And that was going to be for the class of 2025, and in the fall of 2019, Ventura Unified implemented the first standalone elective ethnic studies course that students can take sort of as a, an elective that would meet the graduation requirement. There's a little gap in time there that accounts for COVID, and it was addressed again by the state in the fall of 2021, AB 101, that's the bill that now mandates ethnic studies as a graduation requirement in the state of California. And that's one of our guiding documents in the work we're doing with the teachers, legs to stand on, as it were. And it begins for, for, in the state's mandate with the class of 2030, although we're required to begin offering it by 2025, 26. And then that led to a little bit of a bump from the 20, class of 2025 because of COVID delays, and now it applies to the class of 2026 who are our current sophomores. Those are our current sophomores who now have, before they graduate, to take an ethnic studies course that meets the requirements. Ventura Unified and Dr. Bayless and the leadership began to see a need for more than the standalone elective course. Dr. Bayless will explain more on the next slides about the rationale, but how can we offer it in a way that students maybe don't have to divert from their normal course of study and give up something else, take a, take this elective? So we began, we invited administrators, secondary admin, history teachers, English teachers, humanities in general, to come and be a part of a discussion about where could we implement ethnic studies in a broader way to capture more students on their sort of normal course of study? And then a, a sort of a committee met in the fall of last year to talk about, to pitch, I was there to pitch my ideas for why it should live in a certain place, other teachers were there for their reasons. So that was how district leadership gathered a lot of information and feedback. And then in the winter of this past school year, the decision was made to embed and integrate ethnic studies into U.S. history district-wide, again, that's 11th grade, as a way for every student to have it in their pathway without having to go outside the normal course of study. All students are required to take U.S. history. Students could, of course, and can take, meet the requirement in other ways, we'll talk about that as well. And Dr. Bayless will talk about the rationale for that decision. And then finally, where I come in, really started this year in the spring, was meeting the teachers who were, who are slated to teach history this coming year, and started with an informational session on what many hadn't necessarily heard of AB 101 and how it was going to impact them. They weren't necessarily aware of this board's resolution as well. So all of that information has been brought to them, and we've had subsequent work sessions, which I can go into a little bit more detail as well. We're starting this year with a group of students who do not have that as a graduation requirement. We're calling it kind of a bridge year for our teachers to begin integrating ethnic studies so that next year, when the first group, the juniors next year come up, it'll be ready for them across the district at, at that 11th grade level. Next slide.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. I want to start by saying this is a conversation and a process that every district in the state is undergoing because of AB 101. We're a little bit ahead because our ethnic studies graduation requirement applies a little bit earlier, but Sarah's the one who goes to all of the trainings, VCOE, she was recently on a state training. Everyone is talking about how they're going to fulfill this, so I just want to make sure to put that in the larger context of to put that in the larger context of what the state is doing. We have a unique opportunity and challenge with our year-long graduation requirement as opposed to the semester-long graduation requirement. Other districts are thinking about, well, where should it live? Can it be a semester course in the freshman year? Or can, should it be integrated in English Language Arts? Should it be integrated in other places? So we have a year-long requirement, so it needs to sort of live as such somewhere. And the rationale, I want to focus here on the second item. When I first came to the district, I was a part of the, that timeline, that first square, when we were talking about ethnic studies. And the philosophy was not that it need, it shouldn't take a student outside of their course of study, so they had to drop music, or drop art, or drop dance. It was supposed to be somehow integrated. It wasn't clear how yet, but the start was to have an elective. The elective wasn't going to resolve the graduation requirement, but it was going to help us develop our capacity and our learning in order to ultimately implement a year-long course. So when we had our second iteration of ethnic studies, it's not an iteration, our second layer, really, because we still have the year-long elective course at our sites. The second layer was to offer any teacher who had any course, whether it be math, science, art, whatever, there were no restrictions, to update their course in a way that could fulfill the ethnic studies requirement. So it could be art ethnic studies, it could be English ethnic studies, which is fantastic and great. And I certainly don't want to minimize the significant efforts of Dr. Solidad Molinar and her team to help those teachers get there. The problem is inconsistency and predictability for any course of study that a student has. So at one school, a student would have to leave an AP class or an honors class, or drop an art to go get their AP class or their ethnic studies graduation requirement fulfilled, whereas at another school, the master scheduler drops them into an English class that happens to be ethnic studies approved, and they have their graduation requirement fulfilled without having to go outside of their study. So we need to create consistency and predictability for our parents and our students when it comes to scheduling. And that's why it has to live somewhere. Okay, next slide. Now, actually, can you go back just two slides for me, Marie Anne, I apologize? One more. There we go. If we look at the box, lower right-hand corner, this is the rationale. I'm going to jump back to the slide in just a minute that I was previously on. The rationale about why it's best served, our students are best served with the integration with U S history. There are, again, but I want to be clear, there are many places it could have gone. Many districts are making different decisions. They're putting it in 11th grade English, or they're having a separate course. There's all kinds of things that are happening. But I believe that the rationale for it being in U S history is extremely compelling. So let's go to that slide, and I'll walk you through the rationale. First and foremost, teaching of the standalone course requires a history social science credential. So it's a recognition by the state that the training, that an experience that those teachers have best prepare teachers for success, that can best prepare their students for success with that content area. And again, it's not to say that it can't be done in other places, but for the standalone course, that's the requirement by the state. So that suggests something. I think it suggests something important. Number two, although it is multidisciplinary, and that's one of the key features of ethnic studies, it is, it can be, it can draw on the disciplines of literature, on many disciplines. However, it is embedded in the central subject areas and domains of social science, history, economics, politics, legal studies. Community colleges and other universities have cross-listed their ethnic studies courses with U S history courses. Because when we're talking about ethnic studies in an American context, it's really American ethnic studies. It's American history ethnic studies. So, and this is the case at Ventura College, at all of our Ventura County Community College District courses. U S history is, at certain parts of U S history are, in certain emphases of U S history courses, like the Black Experience, post-Reconstruction, it's cross-listed with American ethnic studies. It's the same, same course. On number five, and I think that, again, as a former history teacher, civics teacher, AP U S history teacher, et cetera, I would say that this is what spoke to me, sort of professionally, in terms of my recollections of my experience. Ethnic studies is already a part of U S history content. It's a part of the U S history framework. You don't have to go outside of the content area to be teaching ethnic studies content or themes. It's already embedded in the course. And these are direct quotes from U S history course framework, and I'll just read them, just so we're really centered on them. Students are supposed to examine changes in racial, ethnic, and gender dynamics in American society. This is U S history. Movements towards equal rights, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual minorities, and for women, emergence of modern corporate economy, and the role of organized labor, social justice movements, struggles for economic and social justice, movements for equality. These are, of course, the themes of ethnic studies as well. So there's a significant overlap, and that's why, those are the five, there are others, but those are the five most compelling reasons that brought me and the team to the decision of having embedded in U S history. Did I see a hand up? I apologize. Okay. Okay. I'm going to turn it back over to Sarah to talk about where we've been in the last few months and where we're headed. And I just, before you go, I just want to thank the U S history and the AP U S history teachers for their exceptional work. So I've visited them once or twice, and I want to be a history teacher again. So, but I'll turn it back over to Sarah.
This is just the most recent history of the work we've done. So what you saw up until now led to March of this past school year. Site administrators really kind of started to figure out who would be teaching this course this coming year. And those teachers in May was the first time we all got to meet as a group. And as I mentioned, it was mostly information. I had been gathering so much information. Dr. Bayless and I had both been just learning so much. We needed to get that information to teachers, have them start to understand what it looks like, not feel caught off guard by any of the information. And so we worked, again, on a timeline for ourselves. We learned about A B 101, learned the basics of ethnic studies. Really, it's something that requires some additional learning for the teachers, certainly to think about integrating it naturally where it belongs in history. June, we had a second work group meeting, and so that's where we started to be able to develop the deliverables that you'll end up, hopefully, we'll be able to share with you at some point, which are unit guides that teachers are working on. And you'll see point four as well. It was offered to teachers to continue to do some of the work over the summer. Taking a, taking a unit, let's say, unit one, which will be the beginning of the school year for them, developing overarching questions, essential questions that can guide inquiry throughout the entire unit, as well as historical questions that are kind of grounded in date and place, and they work with what teachers are already doing. I think Dr. Bayless and I really want that to come across, is that this is not reimagining, reinventing, or even revamping the course. This is a natural place where it, it's things that U S history framework already addresses. So it's sort of, how do we make a concerted unified effort to bring that forward and see how ethnic studies really does fit very well there? And we have a meeting planned for next week, where we'll dive in, and we'll hopefully, I think we're going to meet some new teachers who have come on board for U S history, who will need to get caught up, which will be nice. And this school year, we are going to run integrated ethnic studies, U S history. And it's for, again, for a group of students who do not have the graduation requirement. Then next year, we will start, we will finesse and reevaluate, and then start next year with the group that, of juniors who do need the graduation requirement. That was it.
Yeah. One final slide, sorry. One final slide here. In keeping with the board goals of educational options, again, and I think this speaks to part of the rationale for having it be in history, particularly with respect to option four, that there are now multiple ways to fulfill this graduation requirement. And that's really important to this board, that's really important to the culture of this district, and of course to our families. So I just want to walk you through these with where we're headed, five options. The first is that the students take a U S history course. That fulfills the U S history requirement and the ethnic studies requirement. Same with AP U S history. It fulfills the U S history, state and local graduation requirement and the ethnic studies requirement. A student could take the elective ethnic studies class, the year-long elective, and then they could take a different U S history course. So Ventura College, as an example, the student can take it at Oxnard College, Moore Park College. I mean, technically, a student in California can take a community college course from any community college across the state. And that would fulfill the U S history requirement. There are selected cross-listed U S history, American ethnic studies courses that students can take that would fulfill both, depending upon the area of emphasis that they choose that fits the timeline of the state-required course. And so you can see those four options there. And there's a fifth option, of course. There are pure ethnic studies courses offered at community colleges, again, in reference to our previous comments about the benefits and the increase of number of students taking dual enrollment. And so they could take both courses separately at a community college. So again, in summary, this is something, an opportunity and a challenge that is being wrestled with by all districts across the state. We have, I think, a really compelling program that we're building. I just want to thank Sarah and the U S history teachers and the AP U S history teachers for what we're doing. I think we're doing something really special that centers on the expertise of our history teachers and builds their capacity as well, and will serve students by both the letter of the requirement and the philosophy of the requirement that you initiated with the resolution many years ago. So happy to answer any questions and to listen to your feedback.
Not a question, but a comment. I think this is fantastic, you know, as a social studies teacher as well. For special education, it's important that many of our students are reflected in U S history, and I think this does this. It doesn't segregate ethnic studies and U S history as two separate things. It's actually one individual concept. And I feel like this would work towards that goal of equity and inclusion especially, and kind of bring it all together and say, you know, you are a part of U S history. So I think this is fabulous. I love what you did. And thank you so much for bringing it.
I think we have a lot of former history teachers. So as a former AP history teacher, humanities teacher, this is fantastic. And I was actually scribbling down all of the codes for B C dual enrollment, because our own children have their senior year coming up. But I want to make sure that they can maybe go back and take some of these coursework. But so I think it's a great option. I really appreciate bridging that with dual enrollment and making it a pretty easy pathway. And so I guess one of our next questions is advertising, making sure everyone has it. So that way, those Ventura College classes are just flooded, because I think it's a fantastic option for our families. So thank you.
I really appreciate you trying to create options for students so that they can have more options in their program and take more electives that they might want to take and not have to have this as a required course. So thank you.
Yeah. They let you off easy. I have a ton of questions. So I'll start. So I mean, the first one, I guess, is kind of part comment, part question. Sarah, you mentioned that like this came out of some incidences that we had at our schools, and that certainly was the, I was actually on the board at the time, so that was kind of the beginning of that conversation. But I think for me as a board member, and I know for some of my colleagues, what was really compelling was to see the impact of ethnic studies on graduation rates and on student validation, right? For students to not just experience history kind of as this thing that happened to others, right? But to see themselves reflected in history, to see their own stories shared, and how that validates their participation in what we consider the U S experience, right? So I think, I don't want people to take away from this, that the reason we did this was because we had some racially charged incidences at our schools. I mean, that certainly was, started that community conversation, but I think there's a lot more to what ethnic studies brings to this conversation than that. And then, I guess, I'm curious. So when you presented this to our history teachers, what were the kinds of issues of pushback that you heard?
Yeah. Your first comment is extremely well stated, and I appreciate that you rounded out our comments to that, because all that is absolutely true. Good humanities instruction, good history instruction should absolutely help students see themselves in our country in the present, understand their place in the world in a very real way, not in a distant academic way. So thank you for that comment. I think there's, of course, a range of reactions. And you mentioned just pushback. There's, first, a great degree of excitement about the ability to reconstruct and revise and add to our current U S history program that hasn't been changed in a long time. We haven't had a change in the frameworks or in, for a while. So there's excitement. There's, certainly, there's questions. Does it really live here? Should it live here? Perhaps it could be, students could be better served by having it be elsewhere. Maybe it should be a standalone graduation requirement, where it's an ethnic studies class, but then it presents all the challenges that Dr. Danenberg noted that we're trying to avoid. So I think that you, the pushback, and I wouldn't call it pushback, in humanities and social science settings, I'd call it vigorous debate and good democratic sharing of ideas in the marketplace of ideas. They're just, they're questions. There's no perfect answer. I think this is a really good answer. There's no, there's no perfect answer. Some teachers are concerned, well, what do I, what do I now not teach? So I played a little game with Sarah. I said, you give me, you give me a standard. You open the standard. And again, it's been a while since I've taught U S history, but give me a standard, and I'll tell you how you can elevate the content of ethnic studies, because it's the American story, and elevate the experiences of certain groups in, while still teaching that concept. And I think I was 10 for 10 or something like that. So, yeah, I didn't keep track. But, but there's also a concern that this takes time. This takes time, and much of it is during the school day. And I, we have a deep appreciation, both of us having been teachers, for the amount of time it takes to lesson plan, the amount of time it takes to do P D during the day and create a subplan. I think that that has to be acknowledged and respected as well. So that was a part of the broad range of emotions.
So one concern I have about that is that these are very politically-charged conversations, right? And so I hope that we're providing our staff that will be doing this. I mean, typically, history teachers are used to having vigorous debate in their class, right? But we're, we're asking them to take on something that is fraught in our culture currently, right? So I want to just make sure that we're providing them support, but also kind of some grace when those things maybe don't always go the way that, that we would like them to the first time, right? Because this is, the learning curve here will be steep. And people will be watching this from a variety of kind of entrenched positions, right? So I just want to make sure that, that we are all recognizing that we're asking them to do something that's hard, right? Like politically hard, personally hard. Sometimes, they're going to be wading in on issues that they may not be comfortable with personally, right? And we're asking them to lead students through that. So I just want to acknowledge that.
That's incredibly important, and I want to speak to that. And that's why I have maintained a high-level involvement with them, so that they understand that this is, they have support from the top down. We've included the participation of our administrators. In fact, Sarah and I are scheduled to go speak with all the high school administrators again at the next meeting, to talk to them about ways that we can support our teachers because of that very environment that you spoke to. So my commitment to them, not just saying that here at a board meeting, but So my commitment to them, not just saying that here at a board meeting, but looking them in the eyes in our last meeting, says that I, I will be with them every step of the way, as will their administrators, and they will be supported.
I, no, I think Dr. Bellis shared that just really expertly. I, I just want to add to the conversation that, first, to share my gratitude to everyone involved in this process. It's been a very deliberate and purposeful process, a very inclusive process, very thoughtful. And in, to this, the, the most recent, you know, issue, part of, I'm, I'm reaching back to conversations that I had over the last couple of years with Dr. Bellis, because we were thinking about these things. And we, so much has already been discussed, but I also think that this is really a nod to the professionalism of our U.S. history teachers, to trust them with this, because if we've, and I've had, fortunately, the second half of the year, I had the opportunity to join a couple of teachers, and to see the level of, of dialogue and discourse. You see this play out in other, especially our English classes as well, right? But to see it residing in the depth and breadth of what we experience in our U.S. history classes, there is so much more that they can bring to that discussion, and it has that context that you've all referenced. So it's all, it's, it's a very powerful way of approaching this, in addition to all of the other things that it accomplishes. I think it also, it just enhances the professionalism, and I think, Dr. Bellis, you spoke to this, that it allows them to see themselves as a professional in a new way, and, and to, to step up to the challenge at the same time. So there are a lot of benefits to this, and I'm just really excited about what, what we're hearing and where we go from here.
I think I just got one final comment, that Sarah's really expertly positioned to do this work, because neither of us have taught this course, we're not experts, but she brings out the expertise and the motivation and inspiration. This is really a teacher-led initiative. She is not there saying, here's what you're going to teach, here's how you're going to do it. She's asking the questions and really providing them a space to come up with these things themselves. So that, that process speaks to what you just described, that professionalism, that trust in our U.S. history teachers, Dr. Castro.
Okay, so several other questions, sorry. For the first integrated class, how were students selected? Did they choose the integrated course, or were, what, they were just assigned?
No, all of the courses are integrated. So this is a requirement for all U.S. history teachers and AP U.S. history teachers and special education history teachers.
This year, you said you have one class.
No, so I misunderstood. So this year, you're piloting it district-wide?
Across the board, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I understood that you were doing.
No, I apologize if it was, yeah, it may have been me, but we've had it, we have the standalone that we've had, the elective, and that's student choice. And then this year, for the first year, for the first time, it will be integrated district-wide at U.S. history.
And then, so has the APUSH test been at all adjusted to allow for this additional content? Because I know that, man, those teachers, like, they're cramming in every, I mean, I've just seen like the notes, so.
Yeah. So that's a great question. I probably should have spoke to you earlier when you asked about what were some of the concerns. That, that's a concern that AP U.S. history teachers have expressed understandably. Again, I think there are ways to do it, and even more so because AP U.S. history, the, the timeframe and the chronology covers all the way from pre-colonial to current. And so it even covers more territory that is a, a part of the ethnic studies experience. So I, I have, I have expressed to them, and again, I'm, I am not an expert because I have taught it, but I can at least sympathize and acknowledge what the opportunities are and the challenges are. The test itself hasn't changed. Over the years, the test has increasingly emphasized social history, which is much more analogous to ethnic studies. But the kinds of selections that AP U.S. history teachers make in terms of the DBQs or the free response questions that they have students write, all of those can be focused on ethnic studies, and they'll be squarely still within AP U.S. history, and so they will help, again, do those two things. So I, there are absolutely ways forward to do it. I understand the stress and tension, because there is this final end-of-course test that occurs that doesn't necessarily occur in the other courses, so that the stress is greater.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my last question was, so are we now then kind of re-envisioning the standalone course as a potential way for students who've once exposed to the ethnic studies in their U.S. history class to go deeper as a senior, because they'd be taking the U.S. history junior year, right? So would they, like, could, could they, as a senior, then opt to?
Yeah. The ethnic study standalone elective courses is open to all grade levels, so I think you're going to see two things. You're going to see students who take it at the freshman year and the sophomore year and can make outsized contributions in the junior year integrated course. But you're also going to see what you just described, is students maybe not having that as a part of their elective course of study plan. They take the integrated course as required for all students in the junior year, and then they're excited about it, and then they go into a much deeper study in the standalone elective course. I think you'll see both.
So I guess, I guess I'm wondering then, do you envision this ultimately kind of driving that standalone class to maybe a semester-long program? Because they're, they're going to have met the requirement, and so now to ask a student to dedicate a year to a course that doesn't meet an extra graduation requirement may not be a?
I, I don't think so, honestly, because for two reasons. One, we don't have a graduation requirement for ethnic studies right now, and yet we have full ethnic studies classes in many cases, not all cases. So I think that there is an, an interest independent of the graduation requirement. I, I think that that can only be enhanced by more exposure to the kinds of stories that we know are really engaging and that are part of the, the overall fabric of the American experience that might not have been traditionally highlighted, and that, that's really compelling for a lot of students. So I think it, it very well, first of all, I don't think it's going to minimize enrollment on the front end, but I think it could only benefit it on, on the back end as a, for the senior year.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm very excited about this. I think it's a great change for us, and I, you know, I look forward to seeing how it goes. I think we may have some, some bumps this year, but I, I think it's really important work, and I'm grateful that you both have dedicated so much time to this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to belatedly take our quick board break for 10 minutes, so we will be on recess for 10 minutes, and then we will come back to item 19A, the Williams report. The board has returned from a brief recess, and we will continue with item 19A, Ventura County Office of Education Williams Report for quarter four.
Thank you. Yes, this is the report from the, from VCO, and I am here to report that there were no visits conducted during the quarter four timeline.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone have questions? Kind of routine? No? Okay. And then item 20A, the Personnel Commission. Ms. Crouch.
Excellent. Good evening, President Rodriguez and members of the board. Tonight, I will be providing information to you regarding the Personnel Commission appointment process, and I wanted to start by just giving an overview of what the merit system is, who the Personnel Commission is, and some of the responsibilities of a Personnel Commissioner. So the Personnel Commission is an independent body that's responsible for personnel matters affecting classified employees. Each Commissioner is appointed by three different entities. The Board has an appointee to the Commission, Vespa has an appointee to the Commission, and in turn, those two Commissioners appoint the third appointee. Each of the members serve a three-year term, and they're on staggered terms, so each, there will be one term that expires each year. The merit system is basically a personnel management system designed to promote the efficiency and economy of the workforce and the good of the public by providing for the selection and retention of employees based on fitness and merit, and also the principle of like work for like pay, like pay for like work. The Commission has three core responsibilities, and that's defined by California Education Code. So that body is responsible for overseeing the personnel management program, which again is based on the principles of merit that ensure the selection and promotion of employees based on qualifications through competitive examination. They're also responsible for developing and administering policies that govern, govern the classified service, and they are also the body that conducts appeal hearings for various matters, employee discipline, examination, and personnel policies and procedures that are under the Personnel Commission's purview. Our current Commissioners are Ms. Ann Campbell, who is the Board's appointee to the Commission; we have Kathy Stallings, who is the Vespa's appointee; and then Mr. John Walker is the joint appointee. As the Board is aware, Ms. Campbell's term of office as the Board's appointee will be expiring on December 1st of this year. She was originally appointed to the Commission in 2020 by the Board for her first three-year term, which started at noon in 2020 and is set to expire this year on December 1st, 2023. Prior to becoming a Commissioner, Ms. Campbell served the district for 20 years, and most recently, before she retired, she was a teacher at Buena High School. The Personnel Commission is responsible for duties such as establishing and maintaining a classification plan, which includes creating job descriptions, establishing minimum qualifications. which includes creating job descriptions, establishing minimum qualifications, classifying positions to appropriate salary ranges, again going back to that equal pay for equal work principle. They adopt guidelines to analyze jobs and develop valid employment processes. And then again, they adopt rules and procedures to be followed that govern and carry out the classified service. The minimum qualifications are set forth in California Ed Code and they're very basic requirements. An individual who is interested in becoming a Commissioner must be a registered voter. They must live within the territory of Ventura Unified School District, the district they are serving. They must, you know, law says an adherent to the principle of merit system. I interpret that as a champion of the principle of merit. They cannot be an employee of the district and they cannot be a Board member for our district, a community college district, or the County Board of Education. So, beyond what Ed Code establishes as a minimum qualifications, the California School Personnel Commissioners Association has worked closely throughout the state to establish and recommend some desirable qualifications of a Personnel Commissioner. You know, we would desire that a Commissioner is familiar with what a merit system is. The desire is that they would have some experience with the school district and it would be extremely desirable if they had knowledge of our district, Ventura Unified. We would like someone who has experience in human resources or a related background. Of course, we would like somebody who has the ability to work effectively with others, the public, the Board, unions, our employees. Leadership experience, some knowledge of labor relations. We would want someone who stays abreast of current changes in law. We want to make sure that they have time to participate on the Commission meetings and conferences. The ability to remain neutral and supportive of the merit system regardless of who appoints them. And lastly, some paid or volunteer experience working with community groups. A successful Personnel Commissioner will demonstrate that they have the professional integrity to adhere to the merit system and carry out the rules. Will follow the Brown Act when conducting the public meetings. Have an ability to understand and analyze the complexities of a human resources and personnel management system. Again, can get along well with others. And someone who can develop and apply a working knowledge of laws and procedures relevant to the classified service. So, that's the background of what a merit system is, what the Commission is responsible for. And in addition to that, Ed Code outlines the procedure that the Board must follow when appointing their Commissioner. And so, California Ed Code requires that the Board announce the name of their intended appointee prior to September 30th. And then after 30 days, but within 45 days, you must hold a public hearing, which, you know, gives the public and employees a chance to express their views. And then after the hearing, the Board may make their final decision. So, that leads us to a couple of possibilities of timelines for the appointment process. And those are outlined in the next two slides. So, we want to keep in mind what California Ed Code requires, that announcement between, before September 30th and then the timeframe in which we can, we need to hold that public hearing. So, if the Board were to decide to open recruitment, we would want to get that started pretty quickly as we're coming up to that September 30th deadline date. So, we propose that if we open recruitment, that we do so this week, run it for two weeks. The last time the Board ran a recruitment, we, the Board had decided to assign two Board members to serve on a subcommittee to do a paper screening. And then based on that paper screening, candidates were invited for an interview with the Board. Those interviews would need to take place between August 28th and September 8th. And that could be at a special Board meeting and those interviews would be an open session. After that special Board meeting, then we would be on track to hold the open public hearing at our regular Board meeting on October 10th. And then after the Board meeting, I'm sorry, the public hearing, the Board could make its final approval. And then, of course, the Commissioner would take office on December 1st at noon. The other possible timeline is if no recruitment and the Board decides to reappoint Ms. Campbell, then we would want to announce the Board's intended appointee, Ms. Campbell, at the August 29th regular Board meeting. We would then be on track to hold that open public hearing at the regular Board meeting on October 10th with final approval right, right after. So, this evening, we are looking for consensus and discussion on how the Board might wish to proceed with the appointment process.
I had two questions actually, because this is, you know, Personnel Commission is like so different than, right, like everything else we do. So, does the Personnel Commission have any, like a budget or a cost? And then also, do they do any other, like I thought they do some staff evaluations for HR staff. That wasn't listed.
Yes, so every year, the Personnel Commission is responsible for creating a budget for the classified department. And there's a formal procedure for that. So, there's a first reading that typically happens in April with the final reading and a public hearing in May. After that budget is approved, it goes to the County Superintendent of Schools for review and approval. And then that, once it passes, it gets forwarded to, to our district. Along the way, we do work closely with fiscal services. We keep the Board informed, district administration, and it really is a collaborative effort. So, the, I don't know if you were looking for like the cost for like the classified HR department or the cost for being a Commissioner. I'll just add that Commissioners are paid $50 per meeting for a maximum of $250 per month. We typically have one meeting a month. In some months, we don't have meetings like the month of July. And then they also are entitled to the same benefits package that our employees are entitled to.
Sorry. I was wondering, Ms. Campbell, did you have anything you wanted to share with the Board since you're here?
Oh, okay, got it. Sorry, I forgot about the camera. No, I'd just like to say I'm glad to be a part of all this and I hope that my reports have been helpful to you and I hope to become a part of it again. Any questions for me?
No, I feel like I should have a question because you stayed here so late.
Oh, that's okay. I love getting caught up on what's going on.
But did you want to, was that a motion? I agree. I appreciate Ms. Campbell's reports and I think she's been very responsive to Board questions and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm for reappointing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so then based on that, so we'll make that formal recommendation at the next meeting and then hold an open hearing at the October 10th meeting. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. And thanks for explaining, because I, you know, part of the goal of this was that because a Personnel Commission is not something every district has and also it is really kind of outside of our typical structure and really important because of how we want to make sure that we are compensating people fairly and that favoritism isn't a factor in employment. So, it's really important for people to understand what you do and thank you for your work and for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This brings us to the consent calendar. So, items 21 through 25 are routine in nature. Is there any item that any member wishes to have pulled for a separate conversation?
I would like to pull 24A. And by doing so, I would like to recuse myself from this vote as the addenda item involves a competitor to my current employer, Renaissance Learning. While this is not a conflict of interest as defined by the Fair Political Practice Act or the Government Code, Section 1090, in the interest of transparency and to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest, I am recusing myself from this vote. I would also like to do it for 25A as well because I was not in attendance for all but one of the meetings. I was only in attendance for a closed session. And the meeting that I was not, that I was in attendance for in its entirety was for May 23. But the other three, I was just for closed session.
So, then let's pull for a separate discussion, items 24A and 25A. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries with three yes and one recusal.
And then do I have a motion for the balance of the consent?
I'll move. Approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Forsyth?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Great. That brings us to coming events and we have a really big coming event coming. School! Oh, that's weird. Board reports is usually, isn't it usually the other way around? No? Okay, Board reports first. Never mind. Skip that.
First day of school, we'll have to wait.
Any Board reports to share?
I went to the X Games at the ELOP at Atlas the other day with the two fabulous skateboarders. Young, young, young people that were just amazing. They wowed our youngsters and our, they were very much into it. They were very warm and inviting and it was just such an amazing experience just to observe that. So, thank you for hosting that. It was great to be with Dr. Danenberg and to be a part of that experience. That's it.
I do have one Board report that I wanted to make sure to share. Calvin Peterson and I were in attendance at the San Buenaventura Historic Preservation Society meeting that was held about Washington School. And we were there not to present or speak on behalf of the Board but to listen to community concerns. And so, as such, I just kind of wanted to share with you some of what we learned. Mr. Schaefer, who's their president, shared some of what the process would be if the community is interested in moving forward with the historical designation for the school. He shared that it's not a, it's not an automatic, it's not based on the school's age. So, even though the school's almost 100 years old, it's not based exclusively on age. It has to do with kind of whether or not the architectural details of the school are intact enough and still represent something that's architecturally interesting for the history, history of the community. So, they don't know whether or not that would ultimately be approved by the state or National Register. But if it were, then, then the site could be listed. There's a significant cost. He mentioned about $15,000 for that process to move forward. And, and then there are both advantages and disadvantages for the owner, and us, in this case us, for what that would mean in terms of the school's preservation. Some of the advantages that he listed were that we wouldn't be held to current building codes. So, if the school were being redeveloped, we wouldn't necessarily have to meet existing building codes. We'd be held to the standard of the original building, which could save money if we were doing some renovations. Obviously, there are significant disadvantages in terms of if the building were to be sold and what that might mean in terms of what someone else could do with it. What I thought was very interesting was to hear the community concerns and that's part of why I wanted to make sure to share this with you. The overwhelming concern from the community was not about, was not, was about whether or not that school would be torn down and whether or not that property would be redeveloped into something that the community couldn't have input into. So, I think my takeaway from this process was that the community would just like to be able to voice their concerns to us. And I know several people mentioned attending at some point in the future one of our meetings to share their thoughts. So.
Thank you.
I think that's a, so anyway, it was, it was very interesting and I know Calvin and I both felt like we learned a lot. And it was great to hear directly from the community about their, their thoughts about the school. So, everyone was very respectful, including the Historical Society and we enjoyed our time there. So. Oh, and then the other thing is I just want to share, I was at the Ventura County School Board Association planning meeting last night. And we have three meetings scheduled for this coming year and I think the topics will be really interesting for all of us. So, that's it.
All right. So, if you can place the coming events up there and well, that, okay, there it is. Before we get into this list real quickly, we as an executive team, Cabinet, Administration, a lot of people are returning back to school. Just want to comment that the energy enthusiasm that we continue to come across is just really filling us. Every room and every space that we enter into, each group, there's something unique about it and it just sets, it's such a special time of year. It's a special time of year of anticipation. And so, we have a lot of events to anticipate. We have the All Staff Celebrate event on the 22nd. You'll see that. Obviously, the first day of school coming up on the 23rd. Back to School Nights and then we have an array of our district committees, PAC, APAC, ELAC, and CDAC. And then, of course, our district holiday. So, looking forward to being in the throes of the start of the school year, even though one of our public commentators said that their child isn't necessarily looking forward to being at school. We are going to welcome them back with open arms and look forward to seeing them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have two future Board items listed. Is there anything else that any member wishes to have added? Nope. Okay, so that brings us to Board comments.
Thank you. I would like to go ahead and share, and if it's okay, I'm going to just read something, just to keep my emotions together. But I wanted to share with all of our esteemed leaders and colleagues in this room, after careful consideration and deep reflection, I want to share with you all our extended family, our extended governance team here at Ventura Unified, that I've decided it's time for me to step away from my role as a trustee to represent the USD Area 3. The decision is driven by my sincere commitment to prioritize my family's well-being and our work-life balance during this pivotal chapter of our lives. I'm grateful for the time I've spent with the USD community and scholars. And as you all know, I'm an alumni and an active participant in this community as a parent now as well. I want to express, though, my gratitude and honor for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. And I deeply value the confidence the community has entrusted with me. I do not take that lightly. Thank you for your understanding and support. I just, I truly am so excited for your guys' upcoming year and everything that we've accomplished together. So, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this work. Aloha. Yes. So we're looking at September 1-ish. So if you know any fine, amazing candidates, there will be a process that will be forthcoming. But I will be here until then and absolutely going to be cheering and celebrating and be a part of our festivities for back to school.
You know, just, just recently joining the Board, you know, you've been such a big help as far as understanding the process, being an ally in so many ways, such as social justice, supporting equity and inclusion and access for our students. So, you know, it's heartbreaking to hear you go, but I'm relieved that you're taking on, you're going to be leaving the district better than when you came. I'm pretty confident of that. You've been such a, very supportive of myself, the Board, and also our students. So, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say you will be missed, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I think together as a team, we've accomplished a lot. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So although we will have next meeting to really like, you know, haze you on your way out. I do want to say that, you know, one of the many things I admire about you and that I've really enjoyed seeing as like a colleague, not just as a friend, but is your absolute dedication to student achievement. Your willingness to go through our agendas with a fine-tooth comb, to really ask questions and try deep, to deeply understand the work that's being done and how it impacts students is something I really respect. And I know you've, you've pushed us in ways that were hard, right? Some of those conversations are hard to have, and you've really pushed us to have those conversations because students are really the reason that you're here. And I appreciate that, and we're going to continue to do that in your absence.
I'll be at public comment.
But I do, you know, I mean, I think hopefully what people take from this is that this is a big job, and it requires a lot of time and attention. And you have done that over the last two and a half years. But to continue to do that is, is just going to be too hard. And so, respect your decision and really appreciate the dedication you've shown because it's meant a lot.
Thank you.
I mean, lots, a lot's been, a lot's been shared. Obviously, we'll have more opportunities to share in greater depth. But tonight, I'll just thank you for your focus on literacy and the deep belief in what that means for our students and their families and our, our society in general. And also, I know, I haven't heard the term in a while, but knowing that you came into this work as an Equity Warrior and that you see that literacy is a piece of that. And so thank you for the, for the contributions, for the in-depth and purposeful and lengthy conversations that we've had on that, which, but I mean, it shows your, you are always prepared. You were well researched, and that work will continue. Thank you.
And in light of this, the Board will be opening up an application process for an appointment. Information will be forthcoming through our communications team. And if we have two people who would like to volunteer to serve on that ad hoc committee to do that work, please reach out to Dr. Castro, and we can coordinate how that's going to look moving forward. But if any members of the public who live in Trustee Area III are interested, keep an eye out for the process. And with that, there is no need for us to return to closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Vote as follows. Trustee Forsythe?
Yes.
Trustee Callahan?
Yes.
Trustee Danenberg?
Yes.
And Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
A special thanks to TDC Studios and our base staff. And I want to wish everyone a happy first day of school.
Yes, thank you.
Take care.